I'd like to call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for May 28, 2019. At this time, please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad to see everybody here this evening. Hopefully, everybody had a great Memorial Day weekend, lots of hot dogs, hamburgers, lots of events around the community. So glad to see everybody here tonight. With that, I want to make one announcement. The city manager will probably do it too, but we've got a Thursday night school board joint meeting with the city council Thursday night, the 30th. So it'll be at 6:00, and it's going to be at the school board offices. So I encourage everybody to be there. We're going to talk about all the new school options, and we want to hear everybody's opinion and voice your concerns and see what both sides have to say, so make sure you make it. And before we get on to the city manager, I'd like to hear, he went on a trip, we'll call it, an economic recruiting trip with our new economic development director over the last week or so, so I'd like to hear a little bit about how that trip went. And so with that, go ahead. Any thoughts on anything from council?
I wanted to say just two quick things. One thing that happened to me that I noticed when I first got up here, some, a concerned citizen came to me and said, you know, hey, there's this road, it's curvy, I think it's a dangerous situation, I think we need a guard rail there. I really didn't know what the procedure was, but I mentioned it to someone here in the city. This was a little while back, and then I just noticed driving by this weekend, there's a brand-new guard rail up. And I think it just goes to show, you know, if you live here, if you work here, if you see a concern or have, you see an issue or have a question, bring it to us and see what we can do to help. We may not always know the answer or know the person to go to, but we can certainly try to find it. That's sort of the reason why we're here. Another thing I wanted to say is, some people may think this is silly, but I wanted to say it. I think when something happens, when there's some kind of an emergency situation, when you kind of have to think quickly, you can really kind of tell a lot about how genuine or, you know, you can tell a lot about someone's character. So yesterday, after the Memorial Day service over here in the park, there was a little baby duckling that was following its mom, and it fell into the storm drain over here. Well, Councilman Bill Hartley here got down and rescued the little baby duckling and got it reunited with its family, so he just reacted so quickly. I just wanted to commend him for helping out, so he did a good job.
Well, you should have called Alicia Patrick. She's got a whole gaggle of ducks around. She had one turned over on her lap pitting it the other day. I was like, I've never seen that in my life. All right, before that, I'll lay a little groundwork. We have encouraged the city manager and the new economic development director to get out and meet clients in the U.S. so that we can continue to economically grow the city and grow the falls. So we sent him on a trip where they have a big show where a lot of restaurants, a lot of those type industries, hotel people show up. So you can't bring people and get them interested in Bristol unless you go out and meet the clients and talk generally about what we're all about and why they want to come here. So he had a trip, and I want to kind of hear just in general terms, if it was good, worthwhile, if it, and how it went.
Sure. I mean, as the mayor said, we went to the ICSC show, it's the International Council of Shopping Center Show. It's held every year in Vegas. They have a couple of regional shows. They have some in New York, Charlotte, Atlanta, every year, and we probably need to try to make those as well. I think that would make a bigger impact here in the city instead of going to Vegas. But I do believe Vegas, overall, I believe Vegas was a success for a variety of reasons. Maybe not, you're not going to see buildings going up immediately in the falls because of this trip, but I think it gave me an idea of where the markets are in regards to retail development and where restaurants are, not just in Bristol but nationwide, and what they're looking for. I will just say that the city of Bristol has a lot of work to do in order to be able to get out and recruit the types of businesses and retail sites that we want here in the city of Bristol. It's important that we're, I'd say 50 to 52 localities that had a booth at this show. I went by and met with quite a few of those folks. They all believed that it was worthwhile for them to be there. They say some years it's a great success for them, other years it's not. It just depends on what businesses are looking for at any given time, but they feel like, they felt like it's important to have a presence there. The closest community to us that had a presence there was Oak Ridge, Tennessee, and then the next closest community was Mount Juliet, Tennessee. And Oak Ridge demographics are not too much, not much more different than what our demographics are. You would think it might be a little bit better, but it is better. I mean, you know, I'm not going to sit here and say that it's not better, but it's not dramatically better. And they were pleased with the support that they get when they go out. So it's something that we need to tweak what we do and how we do it. We've got some ideas on, this was our first show, we've got some ideas on how to do things a little bit differently if we decide to go back next year. And I think as long as that falls is in the growth stage, I feel like someone from the city, probably two people from the city at least need to be at that show. I mean, it's a huge show. You've got 2 million square feet, 35,000 to 45,000 people. One person can't do it all at one given time. It's got to be a team effort. So I want to mention a couple of other things, too. The helicopter over in Cumberland Square Park, very shortly you will be seeing that being removed, but don't fear, it'll be put back. Bell Helicopter is going to be repainting that for us and no cost to the city. The June, the original first meeting in Tuesday in June is now going to be on Wednesday, on the 12th, and that's due to the fact that the June 11th is a primary day. Council chambers will be being used, and so we've moved that to Wednesday, the June 12th. And then the other important piece that has come up is Piedmont Avenue Bridge. We've had a meeting with VDOT, and you will see, over the next, I'd say, three months, we'll have a, three or four months, we'll have a joint meeting with Bristol, Tennessee Council, our council, to discuss redoing Piedmont Avenue because that whole street is basically a bridge. And there are some endangered bats that live underneath that bridge that we have to figure out a solution for and how we're going to deal with that problem. So we've, we've talked about numerous ideas on how to fix that whole bridge, whether to replace it all, whether to make it a river wall, whether to just have certain streets crossing Beaver Creek and having the rest of it open. What we're trying to do is figure out a way to do it that's cost-effective and that we can get it done sooner rather than later, and we've got to work together with TDOT to do that. But we're just in the very beginning stages at this point. This will be probably a 10- to 15-year project.
Well, you can send all those bats to Reverend Ophlin, and she said she would love to take all those bats.
I think she's already maybe a little perturbed at me. I won't send her any bats right now, so.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, with that, we've got one person signed up for non-agenda items, David Hill.
Yes, my name is David Hill. I live at 332 Brewer Road, Bristol, Virginia. What I'm here addressing tonight is deer overpopulation in the city limits of Bristol. At one time, I thought it was imperative that I come before the council and citizens because of just mere facts. I incurred an accident in front of WXBPQ, cost me $1,750 from a Honda that a buck ran into the side of. But now it's even more imperative, I think, that we address it because of the vegetation damage that we have in order to try to make our homes look better, personal garden devastation. But now we're moving to another area. I notice that my herd has grown from two deer to about 10 to 12 every day, twice a day. The CDC has determined that the Lyme disease will reach 2 million this year. The infestation of the mounts of deer that we have in the city of Bristol have also brought into a lot of other diseases that have been brought in by the deer population, such as hemorrhaging disease, also known as HD, chronic wasting disease, which is like a form of mad cow disease, Lyme's disease, which I have two people I personally know that have been affected by Lyme's disease, one in Washington County, one of them that lived in Washington County now resides in Florida, anapalmosis disease, and Rocky Mountain spot of fever probably is the one that most people is familiar with. What I'm asking the city and the citizens of this Bristol to think about is, once you incur Lyme's disease, it's kind of like an autoimmune disease. You never really get over it, even though you may be cured for it. So what I'm asking the city councilman to consider is a solution to this overpopulation. Now, there are a lot of people out there that would like to maybe revisit ordinance for one month of the year archery, opening up archery in specific area. I noticed that there's a lot of deer in populated areas like Van Pelt School, so I have a concern for the youth, too. But anyway, to revisit, because now my understanding by the Assistant Police Chief is that no projectiles can be shot inside the city limits of Bristol. So that encourages a whole lot of things. I'm an avid archer. I have about four acres inside the city limits. It's not like I'm shooting at somebody's house. In fact, I could stand on my deck and shoot down to the deer because they come, they come between my house and my carpet, so it's, they're pretty bad. I mean, and they're pretty brazen because then, you know, there's no reason for them to fear anything. But anyway, I would like to maybe go back, look at what Abington has done, look at what Christiansburg has done, and they both have ordinance opening up bone season inside the city limits.
Thank you. I think that's a good point. I think I'd at least like to ask the city manager to contact the game commission, and let's get a meeting with the biological professionals at the game commission so they can, you know, talk to us about what their recommendation is. I'm sure we're not the only municipality in the state that's got this issue, so this is something they're hearing probably from a lot of different avenues. So let's see what they got to say, and let's take it from there and see what we should do.
I think contact Inspector Game Commission. He said, "Call the gardens that are ready sometime, I give money for the farm." He would give me a kill.
Okay. All right, with that, any changes to the regular agenda before we get started? All right. First item is the planning commission to call yourself to order.
I hereby call the planning commission to order.
All right. At this time, I want to consider a joint public hearing on a proposed zoning amendment to add new Section 50-177 campground and RV park standards, revise existing Section 50-109B, and add definitions to Section 50-28. Hereby open the hearing. Planning commission, open your hearing.
I hereby open the planning commission portion of your hearing.
Staff comment.
Council and commission members, this is an amendment proposed to the city zoning ordinance. That's section or chapter 50 and several sections under chapter 50. We recently realized that the city zoning ordinance does not even address campgrounds or RV parks. It's not even mentioned as a use in the existing code. The last couple of months, the planning commission has spent some time to look at potential standards to put in the code, and that's what has been drafted and presented for public hearing today. The purpose, basically, to encourage, but also have regulations on the development of campgrounds, RV parks, and recreational cabin development. The basic components in the draft code are listed there, procedure for applications and site plans, mention of meeting state and local requirements. Department of Health does administer permits for campgrounds at the state level, standards for setback and property lines, just in general design standards, and construction standards for roads and safe access. Also utilities, accessory uses, and landscape buffering, those are smaller sections in the proposed code. And then addressing occupancy, limiting that to short-term, non-permanent-type occupancy. That's the general provisions. We did some looking at campgrounds in the area, and I had, I got a lot of pictures of some bad examples and then found some good examples as well. But the reason for, this kind of shows a little bit, the reason for having some standards is, you see, this is a RV park in Washington County near the lake and a lot of density here, plus permit structures that have been built all through this campground here, and that's one thing that would not, is not allowed by the draft code that we've put before you all. Also, again, you can see that really tight density here versus, and a good example, this is a campground in With County and has nice landscaping and separation of spaces there. That's just a little bit of example. We looked at some others as well. Then we also proposing that the use itself be permitted by right in the B3 and the A districts, those two districts. So that's what Section 109 and 123 is. And the last change proposed is definitions of, for items that are in the draft code that need to be defined, so this is actually the exact wording in the proposed ordinance there. So just to finish up and just say the end result that we're trying to do here is provide attractive, well-maintained developments to attract visitors to Bristol. And just looking at our comprehensive plan under commercial employment areas subsection there, of course, we have a vision or goal that Bristol be a major tourism destination, and then under that, objective 5D is promoting Bristol as the place to stay when visiting other attractions in the area. So that's just kind of goes back to the basis in the conference plan. The public hearing today was advertised as required twice, two consecutive weeks. I received no phone calls or comments in my office. The planning commission is here and then would take their action at their next meeting. That's all.
No one signed up for public comment. Do we have any questions from council? I had a couple of questions. One question I had was, Sugar Hollow is already set up for RV and campground facilities, right?
Correct.
So what about Sugar Hollow? Is it in compliance fully with what you're recommending, or is there anything about Sugar Hollow that would need to be upgraded to comply?
Well, I can't say whether it would be completely in compliance. I didn't go out and measure spaces and pavement, et cetera, but it wouldn't have to because it would be already established as a grandfathered use.
Good. Well, I agree, I agree to some point, and then I disagree when it becomes a safety matter. So if there's things like, I noticed you had the size of the fire things, you know, and things like that, so I would say just make sure the planning commission, y'all look at Sugar Hollow as the thing we've got and make sure it is, it's safe and it would comply, and if so, we should upgrade it, you know, whether it's grandfathered or not, just to make it, you know, appropriate for families. And I, I think it's okay, but I don't know. You know, I've not studied it that close. And do you have an overall map of all the B3 and A zoning in the city? So where, where could someone physically put a campground based on all the B3 and A zoning areas we've got?
I would have to bring that up online. I don't have that right here for you all.
Yeah, I think that's important. I think the planning commission should kind of study that to see if there's anything in that map that kind of looks questionable, like if you do do this and there's one area where maybe residential backs up to it or something that's odd, that you'd want to think about that a little bit longer. So just look at the overall picture and see what that looks like.
We do have quite a bit of B3 zoning. Most of it, most of it is near the interstate, but not all.
Okay. All right, that's all I had. Again, no one signed up for public comment, so hereby close the hearing.
Close the planning commission hearing as well.
All right, planning commission, you can adjourn yourself.
Thank you. Planning commission, adjourned.
Thank you. All right. Item two, consider first reading of an ordinance to repeal Section 66-46, 66-48, and 66-50 of the city code of ordinances, staff report.
Counsel, last, the last meeting, I mentioned to you all that I would be asking to repeal several sections of the personnel ordinances that are within the city code. As I previously mentioned, there's not any other localities, and I know that BBU as well does not have things set aside in an ordinance. It's all in a personnel policy handbook. So over the next several months, I'll probably be coming back to you again to repeal some other personnel matters, but the ones I'm bringing to you today are the most imperative that we have repealed so that on July 1st, the new policies can take effect. It's my fault this wasn't in the packet that you all had, the policy, so I did have that as a discussion item instead of a vote tonight, but you will see, I'll get these out to you tomorrow. Basically, all we're doing is changing workday, instead of saying a workday, to the number of hours that are worked on these policies. And then we do have departments within the cities where their normal workday is not an eight-hour workday. It may be a 12- or 24-hour workday, so we have to figure out how to appropriately compensate for leave time and what type of leave time that they need to take in order to make that fair and equitable across all departments in the city. So you'll see those changes come in as well, but we have to repeal these ordinances in order for the policy, the policy manual to take effect.
Okay. No one signed up for this item, so what's the pleasure, counsel?
Make a motion, we have first reading of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Motion, Mr. Hartley, second, Mr. Osborne. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance 19-5, be it ordained by the city council for the city of Bristol, Virginia, has repealed Section 66-46, 66-48, and 66-50 of the city code of ordinances related to personnel. First reading's May 28, 2019, passed and adopted by the city council, the city of Bristol, Virginia, at a regularly scheduled meeting on Senate Council, which will be on June 12th of 2019.
All right, item three, consider second reading and adoption of FY 1920 budget ordinance. Staff report.
Counsel, this is the second reading of the budget for the fiscal year 1920. I presented the, I presented my budget to council on April 9th of 2019. There was a public hearing on the proposed budget on April 23rd, which was advertised on April 15th in the Bristol Herald-Coolier. Work sessions were held on February 28th, March 7th, March 16th, March 23rd, and April 30th. The first reading of the budget was held on May 14th, and in this budget, what you'll see would be any changes, there are not any line item changes per se, but what you'll see are the changes that were recommended by consensus at the last meeting.
Okay, no one signed up for public comment on this.
And I guess I should say, too, you'll have your budget books tomorrow morning. They are being prepared, but you'll have them first thing tomorrow morning, and if the budget passes tonight, then, I should say, if the budget passes tonight, you'll have your books tomorrow morning, and then the PDF version will be online on Thursday.
Okay. All right, again, no one signed up for public comment on this one, so what's the pleasure, counsel?
I move that we proceed to second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
I second.
Okay, you got a motion, Mr. Osborne, and Mr. Farnham, by caption only. Any discussion? Okay. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
No.
Mumpower.
No.
All right, reading the ordinance, caption only.
Budget ordinance for fiscal year 2019-2020, making general fund, community development block grant fund, solid waste disposal enterprise fund, capital project fund, asset forfeiture fund, transit enterprise fund, school operating fund, school textbook fund, school food service fund, school construction capital projects fund, and school local capital projects fund appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020 in the following amounts. General fund, $53,930,744. Community development block grant fund, $529,935. Solid waste disposal enterprise fund, $7,889,222. Capital project fund, $9,171,588. Transit enterprise fund, $468,607. Asset forfeiture fund, $102,000. School operating fund, $28,228,491. School textbook fund, $924,561. School food service fund, $23,400. School construction capital projects fund, $116,496. School local capital projects fund, $792,944, and regulating payments out of the city treasury and also fixing the tax rate on real and personal property for fiscal year 2020.
All right, what's the pleasure, counsel, to adopt the ordinance?
I make a move that we proceed to final adoption of the ordinance.
I second.
Okay. Mr. Osborne and Mr. Farnham, any discussion?
I'll just, at this point, add one comment. I appreciate the work that the city manager and the CFO, city staff, everyone put into this. It's nice to be finished with the budget here before the end of June. I've seen in the past that, at this point, we're just now getting to the public hearing of the budget, so it takes a lot of work. As you mentioned, we started in February, y'all started actually in January, but all that work early on pays off, and we're able to get this completed in a very timely manner, which has not always been the case. So I appreciate the work everybody's put in.
Anything else?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it's important that we, we talk about this for a minute because, I mean, this is big. This is the vote for the budget for the next 12 months, starting July 1st, and, you know, where the budget is about, you know, the income and the expenses and how we pay our bills over the next 12 months. It's also, when you look at it over the past several years going back, you can sort of see how the direction of the city is going. I mean, just some of the highlights that stick out in this budget to me, that's, again, this is my first time going through the budget like we have this, this spring, all the meetings we've been in, going through a lot of different line items in each budget, and all the pages through all the books and all the meetings. But I think the most important thing is there's, there's money in there where city employees are getting a raise. So I think it's very important because one of the first things that happened when I got on the council is there was a firefighter who told me, hey, I've worked here for about seven years and I've never got a raise. And also, at the same time, some of the health insurance costs have gone up, so it's almost like they're making less money actually taking home on their paycheck than they were years ago. So I think that's important. I think it's a really good thing that's going on in the city, that we're making a choice to invest in our employees. So that's one big thing that I think is a good thing.
I'm going to take what you said and what you said and kind of roll it in together. So thank you to our CFO and city manager and all our department heads for, you put a lot of hours into this, and I really appreciate it. And like I said, I've said before, and I'll say it again, we've got a raise, we're increasing staffing for our public safety, we're increasing our marketing, we're still setting aside debt reserve payments. There's a lot in this budget to be proud of, and you all should be proud of the work you've done. I'm proud of the vote I'm going to cast on it in a minute, and I'm looking forward to implementing it over the next 12 months.
I'll just add, not only the raise, but we're making good investments. As you mentioned, public safety, setting aside money for debt reserve, but also, this is the first time I can think of that we have set aside at least this level of capital funding and have a plan going forward, and also the first time that a tan is not even in part of the language. So that shows really some of the progress we've been making. So there's some, a lot of good in this. With any document, it's not perfect, it won't solve all our problems, but I think it's a good step in the right direction. there's some, a lot of good in this. With any document, it's not perfect. It won't solve all our problems, but I think it's a good step in the right direction.
Anything else?
I do think it's important that, that we, where you mentioned that about, you know, putting the money away, because it, it does seem like, you know, a lot of people know the financial situation of the city. So it's important that we don't go back to where we were in the past. I think, you know, we are spending some money in some places, such as employee raises, and there's some money going to the school system for some much-needed things that, that we can talk about, but, um, but I think we, we still need to overall have the mindset of being fiscally conservative, because we know we're not out of the woods yet, and we need to continue to, to put away money in savings and not spend every single dollar that comes in. A- and we are, you know, being able to put away some money into the, Mr. Hartley, you called it the rainy day fund, but we had talked about a different term for, uh, for that, that account, the emergency, what was the name again, the, that we had mentioned, maybe a potential name for it?
We've discussed the emergency reserve fund?
Emergency reserve fund.
That term is what our fund balance policy sort of alludes to, rather than rainy day fund?
So I think it's important that we're able to still say that we are putting some money away in the bank, in savings, that we're, we're still, uh, in, in my opinion, on track to, to still have that mindset of being fiscally conservative, but, but I mentioned the schools about the money we're spending, and we've talked about it a little bit, and we'll have the, uh, public forum on, uh, Thursday night, us here with the city council and the members of the school board just down the street. We've decided to, to make some investments in our school buildings. Uh, we've been talking about it for a while, but, uh, we're actually gonna be doing that, and you'll see some improvements real soon. We're creating these, uh, safety vestibule areas at the entrances to all four of our schools, our elementary schools, and that's gonna improve student safety, which I think is important. I think if we have the money, we need to do that. We can't be complacent and just say our schools are safe enough. We need to always work hard to continue to make them more safe with everything we do. Uh, and we're also putting some money into remodeling and making some restrooms at all of our elementary schools fully handicap accessible, which, it's twenty nineteen, it's just unacceptable that we don't have that already. So, so we're doing that, and I think, I think that's a good show that the city council is committed to, to working on our schools and figuring out what's best to take care of the kids in the city.
All right, I think, uh, I think everybody knows my position. I'm in a, I'm a no vote on the, on the budget for a couple reasons. One, I think it's financially too aggressive to spend the way this budget's laid out. I think we're not in a position to increase headcount, we're not in a position to spend another million dollars above where we have been. We are not out of the woods as a city from a revenue standpoint, and so we've got to be ultra-conservative on where we take this city, and if we loosen up the belt, we're putting ourselves in a position to where we might have a million dollars that we need to spend somewhere else, and so we gotta be very careful. So I'm not comfortable with this budget for, for a lot of reasons. One, I do support the pay increase to city employees. They deserve it. Uh, I do support, you know, the schools getting an upgrade on their ADA compliance. That, that's needed. It has to be done, but it's not enough money in this budget, because we're spending it in other areas. So we don't have our priorities right. So the other reason I'm against this budget is the priorities of where we're spending the money is not correct. So we're taking away from an education department that needs it more, and we're putting it over to headcount that doesn't need it. So we gotta start understanding what our priorities are in this city. And so as a community, and I've talked to a lot of people, they're with me on, on where these priorities are. So there's a lot of people do not agree with this budget, and I'm one of them. So I just want you to know, um, there are some good things in this budget. Uh, I appreciate that we had a very open and tough discussion. That's the way you kind of figure out who you are as a community, so you can hear all sides of it. But my position hasn't changed, uh, so I'm, I'm a no vote for those reasons, and hopefully we'll continue to have good luck as a city, and financially, we'll continue to move forward so that the economy doesn't go the wrong direction on us, 'cause if it does, then you'll remember this budget cycle. Please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Mumpower?
No.
All right, item four, consider approval of CDBG annual action plan?
Mayor and council members, as an entitlement CDBG grantee, the city of Bristol receives annual federal funding through HUD better, um, this year's allocation totals two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars in CDBG funds, and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and eighty cents in home funds, which are administered through the Tennessee-Virginia Home Consortium, of which Bristol is a member. Each year, the city must develop an annual action plan that provides a blueprint to HUD as to how the city will spend its CDBG funding. This, the annual action plan is developed by the city's Department of Community Development, and is based upon identified needs of its low-income residents and communities within the city. All activities must be part of the city's CDBG comprehensive plan, which is established every five years, outlines the city's goals, and is submitted to HUD. And I will mention that we will be doing a new five-year comprehensive plan next year. Okay, this year's allocation has been distributed as follows. It's up on the chart, compliant with the parameters set by HUD. First of all, fifty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, which is, um, it's limited to twenty percent, goes for administration. Then we have the, the city projects. We are allocating sixty-seven thousand, five hundred to sidewalks, thirty-five thousand, ninety-five dollars to code enforcement, and city, uh, Bristol City Schools is gonna be receiving sixty-five thousand dollars for elevator improvements, ADA accessibility at Stonewall Jackson Elementary School. Not to be too confusing, but up in green, we have carryover in those categories from, uh, prior years, so if you'll see that we didn't request any funding this year, it's because we have quite a bit of carryover left, which we can still spend. Okay, and then we have the public service projects. Um, we can spend fifteen percent for these. And they've been, uh, you'll see what the request is and what the, um, allocation is. These are the local agencies that will be providing services to Bristol residents, and they complete applications for funding. Staff has posted two public notices and held a public comment period as required, with drafts of the, um, annual action plan made available to the public. This is to provide the public with the opportunity to participate in the development of needs, review the proposed activities, and review past program performance. The first public hearing was held on April twenty-third of this year, and the second public hearing is being held tonight. By request at the April twenty-third regularly scheduled council meeting, the mayor's subcommittee was formed and directed to review this year's CDBG annual action plan and the recommended activities. The subcommittee met on May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, with staff to fulfill this direction. Through discussion and consensus, the committee recommends the annual action plan and associated activities as presented. I do wanna point out, there's a couple changes to what we showed at the first public hearing, and this had an agreement from the subcommittee as well. Uh, no funding is gonna be go, going to the proposed wall improvement grants this year, since additional funding was needed to support new sidewalks in the city. Sidewalks was getting very low in what we had left, and we have many important sidewalk projects going up, so we went ahead and moved that money back into sidewalks. Okay, 'cause this was, that is a priority. Also, um, you'll notice up here, Girls Inc., a public service agency, did not receive an allocation this year. However, we do have carryover from twenty seventeen totaling just under three thousand dollars, and the subcommittee has requested that this money be provided to Girls Inc. as a grant for this year. I have not received any questions or comments from the community regarding the, this year's annual action plan. Questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, uh, the sidewalks, I know in the past, and I don't, can't remember if it's through CD, CDBG funding or through VDOT funding, is there a particular, uh, area of town, I know we had mentioned in the past, particularly through Kingtown along King Mill Pike, the need for sidewalks there, as well as the need for sidewalks along Lee Highway? Or, is that where both of these are targeting?
They are. Um, we are limited with HUD funding for sidewalks. We can only do new sidewalks, and they have to be in targeted low-income communities in the city. Um, so if we wanted to do, you know, sidewalks that's in an area where it's not a low income, we can't use CDBG funds for that. But the ones that you're talking about, Kings Mill Pike, I think there's, uh, some sidewalks along Massachusetts Avenue. Um, it's near one of the, I think it, it's near one of the schools.
There's sidewalks over there partway up.
Yeah, I think that we're gonna complete those, but Kings Mill Pike's a big one, and we can use CDB funding for that, CDBG funding. The other thing is, we can leverage CDBG funding with VDOT funding for those projects, and we've got some grants in to do just that.
Like I say, I couldn't remember which source. I know we talked for, about both of those, uh...
Yeah, there, we're supposed to find out, I believe, in June whether or not we're gonna get any of those.
I just wanna thank you. I know there are a lot of, um, worthy organizations up here in this, in this section that requested money, and I wanna thank you for the way you've, you know, kind of distributed out evenly, and for addressing the issue we talked about with Girls Inc., where they weren't getting any money, so, so thank you for fixing that for us.
I was just gonna say real quick that, um, since I touched on it just a few minutes ago about talking about some of the things that are gonna be happening at some of our elementary schools with vestibules and bathrooms, where you had mentioned, um, grant money available to upgrade the elevator at Stonewall Jackson. I think that's really good. I went over to Stonewall Jackson, and they told me the elevator there is, um, well, questionable. Uh, they don't, it's there, but they don't let any kids ride on it, apparently. Um, so that's good. That's a much-needed upgrade, and, and we're using grant money to do that, so.
I think I would say it's, it's good work here. You've got a very active program. I think these are very good projects. I think, um, I would ask the community, you know, this is, this is a opportunity to really go out there and look at where we need support to fix things, you know, in the community, so, you know, let's overwhelm CDBG grants with project lists, you know, let's, let's go and really scour the city and see where all do we need to upgrade sidewalks and things that really need, uh, to beautify the city and do a better job. And, you know, we should be trying to march stuff off the list and, and make it a hard decision for us versus, you know, the other way around. So I, I would encourage the community to do that. I know everybody says, why aren't you doing sidewalks? And, you know, you hear that, but, you know, we need the input, so we're, we're only two sets of eyes kind of looking around, and you live in your communities and neighborhoods, you know, write the stuff down, bring it down here to city hall. It's, it could be fine on a handwritten piece of paper, and, you know, say, out on so-and-so street from blah blah blah, and give the input, and that'll get on the list, and, and we'll start evaluating whether we can put some money toward that next year. So, so that's important, I think. All right, no one signed up for public comment on this one, so what's the pleasure, counsel?
I move that we accept the plan as presented.
I second.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Hartley, second, Mr. Osborne. Any other discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item five, consider approval of fire department grant and ambulance purchase. Staff report.
Uh, counsel, this past year, the city applied for a grant in regards to replace the ambulance that was purchased last year. That grant allows for the, uh, the grant covers fifty percent of that cost. The cost for the ambulance and a cot for the ambulance is two hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Grant funding will cover approximately a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars of this cost, which leaves a hundred and thirty-three thousand remaining as a city's portion of the cost. The majority, or all of the funds to cover that remaining balance are still in the fire department's current fiscal year budget. Thirty-five thousand, uh, dollars from the capital project fund was money that was set aside for a new pumper truck, which will not be utilized this year, as well as thirty-six thousand dollars that was also set afi, set aside in the capital project fund that would be used for the purchase of the ambulance. The balance of that is sixty-two thousand dollars that we would still have to, um, use in order to purchase the ambulance, and that would be taken from the lease and rental line item, um, from the fire department budget that is not being utilized this year. At this time, the, um, we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue from, uh, ambulance service. We have exceeded that by a few dollars at this point, based on what's actually been collected, based on what has been billed. We're well over that. It's just, uh, a timing of when that rolls into the city, but at this point, we have collected over the, over the budgeted amount for the ambulance service.
Okay, we got one person that's signed up for public comment, Jackie Naflin?
Uh, I'll pass her now, if that's okay, sir.
Okay. All right, what's the pleasure, counsel?
Make a motion, we approve.
I second.
Motion, Mr. Osborne, second, Mr. Farnum, any discussion?
I think my understanding is this is a much-needed upgrade. Um, we're not adding a second ambulance and service, but this is just replacing the current one we have. The current one we have is, is older, and this new one will require a lot less maintenance than we currently do on the, on the current one, is my understanding, so, uh, and a lot, a good portion of the money is coming from, um, the state for that.
Fifty percent of it.
So, that helps.
I, I would agree. I appreciate, uh, when the chief came and asked us to buy the first ambulance, he bought it used, knowing that you couldn't use the funds to buy an ambulance, but if you had one in service, you could use the funds to replace it, so, uh, that's what they're doing now, and it's, um, a needed upgrade.
It is. I think it'll, I think it'll be great for them to get a new one, and I appreciate that this is all coming from within their current fiscal year budget, so there's no, no negative impact here, so I think it's, I think it's great.
Any discussion?
My only concern is, uh, there was thirty-five thousand dollars set aside for a pumper truck. Are we gonna be able to make it through another fiscal year without replacing the current pumper truck?
That pumper truck is being replaced. Um, it, that, you all voted on that back in January, February, I believe? To replace that pumper truck and the ladder truck that was voted on at the same time, at some point earlier in the year. And, uh, the payments are, are those are not due until fiscal year twenty twenty.
So at this point, with the fire department doing, uh, life-saving type ambulance services, right, we're not quite a year into it. We're almost a full year. Would you call the program a hundred percent success now? We know all the costs. We know, you know, how the expense goes on the equipment as far as, uh, collection of insurance and everything there, that goes into the whole ambulance services?
Well, I mean, I don't think you ever consider anything a hundred percent success, 'cause there's always room for improvement, but, so far, I believe this has been a successful venture, based on everything, you know, there's learning curves that we had to overcome. There was an issue with Medicare billing. It was not our fault. It was just a coding issue that occurred somewhere in Medicare that was kicking out a lot of our early billings. That got worked out within the past couple of months. It took a lot of work on behalf of the fire department, a lot of work on ha, behalf of the billing company, and also, uh, individuals within Medicare to get that. There was just a glitch somewhere, and once we got that glitch worked out, all those payments started rolling in like, like they expected and like they projected. I think based on the number of calls that we've ran, they've got a pretty good estimate on what it's gonna cost to continue to run that service, and we'll be able to continually operate that service. It's not gonna be a revenue generator for the city. It's not intended to be. It's intended to provide a service for citizens and to cover the costs, and I think based on our budget, we're covering costs with that.
Okay, well, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm wanting to say there needs to be a pause of caution. They were not yet a year into this, and you don't go and invest wholly and, and fully into a new venture like this till you've fully studied it and see really what, what it's doing for you. So here we are, and, and it may be a success, but I think we're too early to call it a success. I think we gotta see at least twenty-four months of solid data under our belt to really know whether or not this needs to go forward. Now, at the same time, we're talking about buying a new piece of equipment. We got other municipalities, specifically Washington County, going out and contracting ambulance services on third party. So obviously, they're convinced that the road to go down is not your fire department doing ambulance service. Uh, we haven't heard from emergency services lately. We haven't heard from the Bristol Life Saving Crew lately. So I think there's some unanswered questions to really say, is this truly the path to go down, that we need to invest this much money now before we understand those other options and what those other options mean? So I think it's too early, uh, to make this kind of investment. Maybe another year, it'll be the right time, and I think right now, it's, it's too early to, to put that kind of money towards something like this until you know more.
Well, I, you know, in regards to the comment about Washington County, I think it's specifically in Glade Spring. They had their ambulance service, and they were having issues. I think for a variety of different reasons, they were having issues. I know we saw several years ago, Saltwater Rescue Squad had issues, and a lot of that had to do with had to do with, in regards to the way they were billing. And I think several people went to prison for the way they were billing. You know, I think, and I'm not disagreeing, you know, I think there's things that need to be looked at in regards, are we doing what's right? And at the end of the day, you know, if, if it's covering costs, is that a success? I'll leave that up to you all to decide if you wanna make revenue. And we're not making a certain amount of revenue, and it's not a success. I think we have to determine, what do we consider a success? Is it covering the costs, and is it caring for the people that we're here to serve? And that's, that's what determines success for, at least in my mind, on this venture.
For the current ambulance that we have, is there a cost, and you may not know this off the top of your head, but how much time and money have we spent on maintenance on the current ambulance? Which I know we bought that, and it was a really good deal. But my understanding is it's really old and has a lot of maintenance issues.
Captain Russell, I think, is here to, there he goes. I think he has all those specific numbers. I don't have them memorized yet. I'll get it memorized, but.
To this date, starting in August of last year, it's been in the shop a total of 16 times, which means we're totally out of service on transports to the ER. In regards to that, we're having to depend on Life Saving Crew, Bristol, Tennessee, Washington County Fire Rescue, and get some K- Kinderhood to come in for these transports. So, taking one ambulance out of the system is why we put this ambulance in place. Start with was to cover the calls to get our citizens to the ER quickly. So, it's been in the shop a total of 16 times, which has been out of service. And these was pulled today from Dave McConnell at the shop, City Shop.
Okay.
And that's the same ambulance that was purchased as a used ambulance, right, a year ago?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, so we didn't, we didn't buy a very reliable vehicle, I guess. We had some that already had issues. That's why it was on the market as a used vehicle.
Yeah, and Mr. McConnell can elaborate on that. Emergency vehicles, you know, it's 100,000 miles when your personal vehicle is... And when you get in an emergency vehicle, you're probably looking 200, 250,000 miles, 'cause it's cold start, full throttle, till you get to the car, you know what I'm saying? It's not treated like your personal vehicle, 'cause obviously, it's an emergency vehicle, and we have to respond quickly.
I think in regards to your comment, we purchased that for $17,000. It had a brand-new engine in it. That didn't replace every other, everything else that was in the vehicle. We moved forward with that last year, based on the consensus of council throughout that whole budget process, that we felt like we needed to go ahead and do that ambulance. And part of the reason for buying the used ambulance was so we could apply for the grant, because if you didn't have an ambulance at all, you couldn't apply for the grant. And by having, having the used ambulance saying it needed to be replaced, that gave us the opportunity to apply for the grant.
And this is a brand-new vehicle?
This is brand-new.
No additional investment needed to outfit the vehicle for full compliance to the emergency services?
To my knowledge, all of that has already been purchased out of budget in the year. And some of these items went to the shop, whereas general maintenance, but in return, it's still downtime for transports to the ER.
And if, if we approve this, you'll keep the existing ambulance, I guess, as a backup?
That is correct. It'll be a backup vehicle, and, you know, when the new one goes down for service, we'll use it to cover the calls.
So, if you do have an issue like that, or it's in the shop, we'll still be able to serve the residents?
That is correct. And also, special events, we can utilize it, such as Rhythm and Roots, to get that additional EMS staffing that we need to cover calls on that as well.
Do you know about what percent of the calls that the fire department's been covering with that ambulance this year versus, I know it was zero a year before, 'cause there was all Bristol Life Saving Crew, so what percent are you able to cover?
I do not have any numbers.
They're, right now, they're running about 200. Let me, I've got the number right here. It's about, I wanna say 200 calls a month with that ambulance, I think.
It'd be real close.
I've got that right here. Hang on.
While you're looking that up, I was just gonna say, it does, it seems like it makes sense. You know, it's like, maybe some people, if you have an old lawnmower, and then you go buy a new lawnmower, you may keep your old one as a, as a backup. And if your new one breaks, you can still go back to the, to the backup. So, in a way, we'll have a new ambulance. We shouldn't have to worry about maintenance issues. But if something does happen, we have one as a backup, which is the used one. And again, we only have to really pay for half of it out of city money. Is that right? 'Cause the other half will come from the state?
That is correct. Yes.
In the month of April of 2019, EMS, it was 244 EMS calls in April. March, there were 229 calls. Let's see. Yeah, that's the, that's the specifics for those, that, for the month of April. But it's, it's averaging a little over 200 calls a month, EMS calls.
Fire department only?
Yeah.
So, then what's the total population of all the calls that's, how much the Life Saving Crew covering?
I think they're covering roughly, probably about the same.
So, you're covering about 50% of the calls of the fire department?
Maybe not quite 50. I'd say about 40% of the EMS calls within the city.
That averages out to them going out, y'all going out seven or eight times a day, basically, on average.
So, I think it's odd to me, I mean, the Life Saving Crew's not been in here. And I mean, we're, we're basically going on a path of putting the Life Saving Crew out of business. Everybody understands that, right? So, the Life Saving Crew, there was a lot of, there was a lot of discussion about why they couldn't keep staffing proper, why they couldn't answer all the calls. And so, we gave them a chance to respond. We gave them a chance to do what they need to do to correct the situation, and things continued to stay the same. So, we gave the fire department the go-ahead to start doing life and rescue ambulance services, right? So, does that mean the, do I read into this that the Bristol Life Saving Crew has now given up? And they're saying, "We're just gonna let this thing kinda go away"? Because that's, that's kinda what we're talking about. So, we'll end up having to put another new vehicle in the budget next year, if, if you're 40% right, or maybe two, right? So, I don't know if we've accounted for that, but at some point, we got a plan for that.
Well, I think, I have not had any conversations with Bristol Life Saving Crew recently in regards to what their future holds. There for a while, probably for six or eight months, we had meetings once a month with them. Maybe went on for about a year. I can't remember. I don't know if you were part of that or not. But I feel like that situation stabilized to a degree. I'm not receiving as many complaints as I used to receive. And I think maybe at the moment, everything is leveled out for the Life Saving Crew.
So, how is our dispatching operation now decide whether it's the Bristol Life Saving Crew that's dispatched to an emergency versus the?
This ambulance covers the same territory as the Fire Station One covers.
But I mean, if they're, if, if all vehicles are idle, nobody's out on the call, which probably doesn't happen a lot. But let's say, you know, Life Saving Crew's got vehicles that could respond, so is the fire department. How's dispatch deciding who gets priority? Is it fire department going, or is it Bristol Life Saving Crew going?
It depends on the address.
Depends on the address?
Depends on the address. It's, there, there's a grid map, and Fire Station One has a certain sector of the city. And any call that comes within that sector of the city, the EMS ambulance responds to that, to that.
So, this new vehicle be at Station One?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, what you have, you have Station Two, which is the Life Saving Crew Station One. They cover the west end of the city. Station Three covers the northwest part of the city. And then basically, Station One here covers the central part of the city, downtown.
I know a, a fire truck, an engine, ladder truck cannot go over the Piedmont Station, Piedmont Bridge and the East Mary Street Bridge. Can the ambulance go those routes?
We practice not to, just because I know the weight limits on the bridge has lowered once again. So, we still use the railroad tracks and other routes. We can make it under the bridge down by Mum Power Drive with an ambulance. We can access that bridge. However, the fire apparatus cannot.
So, having one downtown, it means just certain areas, we can get to them quicker.
Correct.
Being there.
And also, you know, the Piedmont affects the fire engine response as well, as we reviewed before. So, Station Two actually responds from the west end to cover that area on Solar Hill and all that.
So, what's, what's the logic behind putting it at Station One versus, say, Station Three up at Exit Seven?
I don't really have the information that you and Chief.
I think at that time, just based on the needs that we were seeing, where the most number of calls were coming in, and where, where the Life Saving Crew was having issues. 'Cause when you've got two ambulances as far apart as they were, there was an underrepresented portion of the city, based on the length of time that it would take for the ambulance at the Life Saving Crew down on Euclid to get to the central part of the city. And the same with the truck from Station Three getting to the central part of the city.
So, you would say if you took the map and plotted all the calls, you would see them all concentrated closer to Station One. That's why it's gonna be positioned at Station One?
I don't necessarily think that's the reason. I, I think it was just more or less a timing issue. You know, what's the response time for the truck from Euclid Avenue to get to maybe Hardee's on Lee Highway? And if you've got someone choking or having a heart attack, you know, that's a significant amount of time as compared to what it would take for this truck to get there. I don't think it had anything to do with the number of calls in a certain area. I think it just, and proportionally, I would say, most fire and police calls both occur in our downtown region, regardless of what the call is for. You've got a more concentrated, more concentration of people, and we have an, an older population in the central part of the city.
Our fire department is still backing up all the EMS calls, correct?
Not all the EMS calls. There's a protocol that was set forward, and that, that came out of the conversation that the mayor, you, and I, and the fire chief had in December of 2017 with the Life Saving Crew. A protocol was put in place at that time as to what calls our fire department would respond on when it was an EMS call. Based on the Life Saving Crew's request, they wanted us on about 12 to 14 different types of calls. If there's a heart attack, they want someone, they want extra hands. Lots of times, if you've got a heart attack victim, two people are not enough to handle the situation. If you have difficulty breathing, they want someone, they want an extra set of hands. I don't have, I think I sent that whole list out to you all a couple of months ago as to the types of calls that the Life Saving Crew asked us to respond on them with. Because that was a lot of the issues that we were having back in the fall of 17. Who was responding? Why were they responding? So, now there's a protocol in place for that.
Two people's not enough for a lot of calls.
I mean, right. And I think any, I think it's a child under 12. Is that the cutoff? Where they always want extra hands?
I think so.
I think it's a child under, any, any call involving a child under the age of 12, they want an extra set of hands, because you've usually got a upset parent, maybe upset siblings. And they always want this extra hands involved.
Okay, any discussion?
I just wanna say thank you all for all, all that you do with this. I know it's not easy, and we just, we really do appreciate it. Just thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mum Power?
Yes. All right, item six, consider release of performance agreement with Oakmont LLC.
Counsel, Oakmont has approached us in regards to releasing them from their performance agreement. We have reviewed all the records. It appears that they have met all the obligations that we set forth in the performance agreement with them. Let me find my... Except, the only thing that they haven't met is time, which is, the time would expire May of 2021. The requirements at that time, when we went into this performance agreement in November of 14, was a $7 million capital investment, 50 full-time employees, generating tax revenue in excess of $360,000, and operate the assisted living facility at the location for five years. I know that, we know for a fact, they've done over $7 million of, of capital investment. They have over 50 full-time employees. They have generated the $360,000 in tax revenue. And once again, the only thing that remains is it being open for another year. I believe, based on their track record and what all they've done out there and what they plan on continuing to do, I don't have any concerns that they're gonna all of a sudden shutter the doors tomorrow. I think Mr. Jones is here, if you all have any questions for him. But it would allow him to kinda operate his business unimpeded, without having a third party involved when he needs to do certain business activities that we really don't need to be a part of. And I think he's just requesting that he be released early, based on his track record and the fact he's met everything that he can possibly meet except time.
Okay. No one signed up for public comment on this one, so what's the pleasure, counsel?
I make a motion that we release them from the performance agreement.
Second.
Okay, good motion, Mr. Hartley, second, Mr. Osborne. Any discussion?
I just think it's important for us to, as a council, as a folks that work here at the city, I think we just need to recognize, how does the business, how does the city approach and treat businesses and business owners? You know, I think we, we need to be a city that, that's, that's open, and, and one that business owners say, "Hey, we like working with the city of Bristol, Virginia." I think if we have that reputation with business owner after business owner after business owner, it's gonna lead to, to more positive things than negative and more growth. This particular agreement with Oakmont, we've got to take a tour of the facility, and it's top of the line. It's beautiful. So, I mean, we appreciate people who come and work, not just work here, but as business owners, but invest money to grow, to have employees, to hire people, and then money they make to reinvest that even more, to grow even more. So, so, yeah, hats off to them. We appreciate them doing business in Bristol, Virginia.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I've said before, and I'll say again, I do think, in a broad thing, we need to look at incentives and kinda form some policies around how those get used and... But to me, this is a good example of that, that those performance agreements are, are put in place to kinda give us some protection. And it's always good to see a business that comes in and not only meets the requirements, but far exceeds them, and, and in a timely manner, which they've done. So, I have no problem, you know, letting, getting rid of this agreement. I appreciate their initial and continued investment in our community.
I, I would agree. I, one thing I'd like to say on the incentives portion, just in general, not with this, but just in general, I, I think we should have some type of set, like Mr. Hartley said, set plan and formula on how we do this. And maybe after July, we could have some kinda meeting, you know, discussing these incentives and kinda setting down some, some groundwork. But as far as, as far as Oakmont, I was, I was on the tour, and it really is a lovely place. About halfway through, I was thinking to myself, "Am I, am I too young to move in here? Can I just come on in now?" But, I mean, it, it was lovely, and it's really nice, and I appreciate all the, all the investment you put in back there, and it looks like there's always construction happening, you're always extending it. So, that's, that's fantastic. So, so thank you.
If you're serious, we could probably fill out the application for you.
Well, you know, I, it might be out of my, it might be out of my budget right now.
I, I will say, I can't, I don't know which one of you brought it up, but we are planning on having a joint IDA and council meeting sometime in June. I know, maybe July? Okay. So, just based on everybody's schedules, it may be July now in order to start working on incentive packages and what we, how we want to continue to incentivize businesses and what's gonna be the cutoff.
Good.
Anything else? Okay, I'll add one, a couple comments. One, I think the facility out there is beautiful. I think that development, the way it's been done, the out, the outward appearance, the look of it, is exactly what that end of town needed. It's something that looks really professional. I think it was done really nice. The whole craftsmanship kinda looked to it. I mean, it's gorgeous. So, I would encourage you to keep investing in the city, talk to developers. You've got, you've got kind of a showcase now to maybe change the community and that end of town. So, it'd be nice to get developers. So it'd be nice to get developers that want to develop around what you've done in a similar way, houses, to make it look the look, and that's kind of what we want, right? You put, you put one good project in place that kind of sets the example, and it's the diamond for the community. Talk to other developers you know, get them to say, look, let's try to figure out a way to develop around this, let's make this neighborhood, let's revitalize this community around this development on that end of town. And that's, that's what we've got to do, because you know, that, that end of town's a 1920 to 1930 community. That, those houses were built back around the turn of the century, so, so there needs to be some effort, and the private industry's the one that does it. So you guys have done a really nice job, and you've got some other businesses that are doing great, so I applaud you, and keep up the good work, and help us keep growing. All right, with that, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
All right, item seven, discussion of personnel policies.
Counsel, I don't think there's much more that I can add in what I already discussed earlier today. As I said, it was my fault these didn't get sent to you earlier, just where I'd been traveling, I just didn't get an opportunity to review them and get them to you, but you'll have those first thing tomorrow in your email, so you can review those policies. As I said, it's more or less just changing the wording from work day to hours, and that makes it more equitable across the entire city.
Any other comments, or is that the only, only question I have? Is that the only thing now you see in the personnel policies that kind of brings everything up to a standard that makes sense for the staffing?
No.
So there's going to be other changes?
There's going to be, yes.
And you want a hint on what some of those are?
I'd rather do that behind closed doors at some point.
Okay. All right, so there are, there will be more changes?
You'll get to hear, just, not yet.
All right. Well, it's good, it's good that we're looking at that, because personnel policies are important to make sure everything's fair and above board, and that everything's done consistently, and, you know, departments that have different work schedules and all that kind of stuff. So you really got to, you can't let that stuff set aside more than a year, you got to make sure it's always up to date. All right, with that, any other discussion or comments? All right, item eight, discussion of Injinko contract amendments and assignment agreement with TBA.
Counsel, the Injinko contract, that is the gas company that is converting the methane that is produced at the landfill over to electricity. They have an agreement with TBA to produce 4.5 megawatts of electricity to TBA. That was the initial agreement they went into several years ago when they came into the city. Part of the contract that the city had was that we had to maintain the gas lines, maintain the gas wells, move all the gas wells. Anything associated with the gas, the city was on the hook in order, financially, in order to have that done. Injinko has been unable to meet the requirements with TBA, and they went to TBA asking for a little bit of relief, because they're now paying liquidated damages to TBA due to the fact that they cannot meet the electricity requirements that they promised. And when that happened, Injinko came to the city, or I went to Injinko, it's kind of all mutual, and I said, well, if we're going to start changing everything, let's look at what the city is on the hook for. Currently, at, in times in the past, the city went ahead and agreed to allow Injinko to put in gas wells, and eventually, the city became indebted to Injinko to the tune of about $750,000. That was being paid back through the revenue that was being produced from the gas that was being produced at the landfill. We owe roughly about $711,000 to Injinko right now. With this new contract, what happens, instead of the city getting a 5% revenue of basically nothing at this point, we, we, now we're beginning 2% of the revenue that's being produced, because TV, or Injinko will be able to meet the contract requirements with TBA, and then we will also no longer be indebted to Injinko to that $711,000. They will wipe that debt out, plus they will maintain their gas lines. And when I say maintain gas lines, I should say gas wells. We still have to maintain the gas lines, simply because even if Injinko was not a partner with the city, we would still have to be flaring the gas off the landfill ourselves, so we'll be maintaining those gas lines. We'll have a professional engineering group to help us do that and maintain those, just as we do now. So there won't be any change for us, except for the fact, our manpower will not now be used to help with the gas lines. We will no longer owe Injinko, and we should be receiving of some form of revenue after the contract amendment.
Okay, any questions?
Oh, yeah. The 2%. You feel like that's the highest percentage we can get out of this deal?
We've been talking about this since November, Wallace, is it? Probably late October, November, we've been in discussions with Injinko, and Injinko's been in discussions with TBA. I'm not saying that we can't get more, I feel like everybody, based on the concessions that Injinko's making and what we're making, I think that's probably, is about as good as we're going to get.
So we were making 5%, but they weren't, 5% of zero is zero?
Right.
Okay.
We have yet to get one penny out of this deal.
Right. Based on projections now, we will have a revenue stream coming in, and not that it's going to be a large revenue stream by any stretch of the imagination, but it's more than what we've had.
Have you looked at the agreement that Injinko now has with TBA, and the amount of actual historical performance that's occurred over, say, the last six to nine months? Are they now able to do what TBA's expecting? And does this contract get everybody performing the way they can perform right now? Or is this based on some additional future projections that may or may not come true?
TV, based on the conversations I've had with TBA, I believe, based on what TBA is expecting, TBA was in this morning, met with all of the council members. I think, based on the conversations that we've had, I believe, TBA feels like it's realistic based on the actual history of what's being produced up there, that the contract, the new contract will meet what TBA expects.
I think it's certainly worthwhile, you know, if it's 2%, even if it's just a little bit, when you pair that with Injinko just wiping away $711,000 in debt. I mean, I think that's the bigger, bigger story out of this, even than the 2%, honestly.
So what lingering liability or new liabilities do you see in front of the city based on this whole gas, Injinko, TBA deal that, that we would be facing now?
Well, I think the, whether or not Injinko was involved, the liability for us is going to be the maintenance of the gas lines, is that, I think that's probably our biggest issue, do you not agree? Regardless of Injinko was there or not, we would have to maintain gas lines in order to flare that gas off. You know, at one point in the city, they would flare that gas off, and as Mr. Fleener once said, there's a big blue light at the top of the hill, and that was coming from where we were flaring the gas off of, of the landfill. So we'll, we'll have to maintain that regardless.
So is that maintaining at current cost levels, or any additional?
It'll probably be at the current cost levels right now, I mean, for the foreseeable future. We're not seeing anything that's significant that I know of unless...
We're going to have to look into a little bit more.
You can come on up to the microphone here.
The, the maintenance agreement, I, I guess I'm a little concerned because, and I'd like to look into it a little further, because if we, they may require more wells than what we might need to just flare the gas. Or we may be able to do a different system that would cost less and not use the wells. I'm talking to some of the guys out at the landfill, there's two different opinions out there about, one of them thinks we need the wells, and another one thinks we could possibly do something a little different. So I guess I want to look into that a little bit in more detail to figure out if we can get our cost portion of it down, and let them add to that if they want to enhance it, I guess.
And I guess I should say, we received, what, the MOU on Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday from them? So we're now piecing together this MOU, that's why it's a discussion item right now. It's not going to have to be, we can probably vote on it on the June 12th meeting, but if we need to, we can probably push it off to that June 24th meeting or 25th meeting as well.
So am I wrong in saying that we, we ought to be in a position to where Injinko and the TBA agreement starts to show that they can meet those obligations before we, as a city, have to increase any additional maintenance or costs or liability or installation of equipment to try to allow them to meet? In other words, show you can meet what you've agreed to before we add anything additional?
I think TBA's goal is for them to be able to meet what they are setting in the contract, because if they're not meeting their electricity, if Injinko's not meeting the electricity demand that TBA needs, that kind of skewers everything that TBA has done. So TBA wants to make sure that the contract, they're meeting exactly what they need to meet in order for it to be successful on their end.
Because they've been backed us a couple times, right? To put, put in new wells, put in new, and, and then, you know, that didn't get to the point of satisfying what their obligations were. So my point is, we can't go down that path again. They've got, they've got to show that they're able to meet their obligations before we would agree to do anything additional than what we've already done.
And I think historically, you can look at the numbers that's being produced up there, and I, I think based on the agreement that Injinko has with TBA, barring any unforeseen circumstance, there's no reason, based on historical data, that they wouldn't be able to meet what the TBA contract now calls for. And then, I guess the other piece of this puzzle is the power contract that used to be with the city and BVU and TBA, probably should have been, shouldn't have, I wouldn't say probably, should have been assigned over to the BVU authority back in July of 2010, when BVU became its own authority. For whatever reason, it's never been assigned over, and I think at your June board meeting with BVU, it's going to come up for a vote in regards to that power contract, where we, where the city assigns its portion over to BVU, and then BVU ratifies the contract with TBA. So that's the third piece of this puzzle.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Moving on to consent agenda, what's the pleasure council for consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Okay, good motion to approve is written?
I second.
Second, Mr. Farnum. Any questions or anything?
No question, I'd like to make two comments. One, I know Mr. Farnum already mentioned about the, the funding for the ADA and the vestibles in the school, that's actually, some of that money will be transferred now in, in this item, what we're getting ready to prove. And that's good, because it allows them to go ahead and start that work before next budget year, and then we can transfer some more once that happens. And the other thing was just item 9.8, renaming of Highland View Park, Richard J. Fisher Field. I think that's a very well-deserved honor, so.
Okay, yeah, I was down at the Little League for a number of years with Mr. Fisher, so he was, he pretty much lived down at that ballpark. I mean, I, I don't say that lightly, he lived down at that ballpark for years. So if anybody deserves it, he probably deserves it, because he put a lot, he put a lot of sweat and blood into what went on down there. And girl softball's the beneficiary of it, so now, that's, girl softball's here because of what he did, so, well deserved. All right, is that it? Any other comments? All right. With that, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Your badge earned.